It's time to pack it up. And that's all I got to say. I'm on point, you know.
Thank you, thank you, Chris.
If I could comment for Randy Cole again. In fact, the allegations made about this county having excessive edit funds, we actually collect 1.5 million plus in edit funds, as does the city, Tell City, and Troy. It's a split local income tax is what it is. Each one of us takes a share of that. Now, out of that, that's how we pay for our community crossings match. It's how we pay to operate the jail and subsidize them because we can't get enough property taxes. We put security into the courthouse. It's our economic development. So, 1.5 million is all allocated. It's not bonus money that we just have setting around. Now, we do have some decent balances in January because we just collected our property tax. We won't collect that again till May. The county has to have some reserves to operate. One other thing that I hear regularly, we pay county taxes. We shouldn't have to pay anything. And I ask you, how many people pay federal taxes? I would say everybody does. Do you get free postage? Should the post office give you free postage where you can mail a letter, a box, anything you want to?
We will.
Pay federal tax. It's the same thing. Our county dollars, we're using our edit money and places edit money just to keep the jail afloat. So, I mean, it's the same thing. I mean, you should get free postage. So, thank you again.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Chris, I know you, like I said, but people that are watching won't. And they'll go, who is that?
Hi, I'm Chris Wheeler. I'm currently the director at Perry County. Some of you know me and some of you don't. And today, yes, I did open an email from Jeff resigning as our attorney. Sadly.
I hated to. Don't make me cheer up.
That's one of the things that's been affected because of this that started in November. We lost our attorney, who, yes, I consider a friend. There are some themes that have been said in our meetings and tonight in this meeting, as I've sat and I'm sitting, listening to the comments that have been had, that are not completely true. I admittedly have been known to be quite passionate in some of my meetings. I hate doing the minutes because I hear myself. I'm here in Tell City. I am a Tell City resident. I live in Perry County. I have a firm belief that we take care of our own. No matter where you live, you take care of your own. I've had meetings with a few of you. And I want you to know that when Ms. Cindy Taylor was up talking and she said that this isn't needed. We know that Ms. Taylor does not believe in Perry County recycling. She has made it very clear in past meetings. I want to tell you I'm here as the director correcting things. But I'm also here as a Tell City Perry County resident. Perry County, Northern Perry County needs this. I want to make that clear to everyone in this room. Chief Llewellyn, I know that you know Perry County quite well. I know that you know Tell City. We have residents that cannot afford dumpsters. We have citizens in Tell City that cannot afford $45. I'll quite honestly tell you, you can all look up what I make a year. And I'm raising three grandchildren. I cannot sometimes afford that $45 bill. I save from two paychecks. But I pay that $45 bill because it's needed. So, one, the Tell City residents, you do get that. I wish we could all get a break for a year. Sure, I do. But I don't want something illegal to happen. I do not want us to do something that's illegal. I do not want this department closed. There's people that go to work that don't make much money that need a job. I hire people. And we sit here and we argue. We argue at the large one. I think the edit money should be used for what it should be used for. I don't know. I know there's, we need to revamp it. I've made it very clear that Wa-Paka, Tell City, Walmart should not pay the same as a resident, as a small owner should, someone on Main Street, they should not pay the same. It should be revamped. Mr. Baumeister made that clear when he was on the board. I agree with him. A small mom and pop shop should not pay the same. It needs to be revamped. It's not the time to do it, to rip it apart right at the end so that someone can come in and take this apart. This department's been there. I know this was not liked when it was brought in. I understand that. But we're here now. You know, it used to be that it was, you could pay it in two installments. They got rid of that because people were writing bad checks. Why do we have the $20 late fee? Because people would not pay the bill. That's why. This is not just about people and what they do. We employ people that come to work to feed their families. The people that you have been raised with, the people that you go to school with, that live in the northern heart of the county, those people cannot afford it. They have come to the center once a week and have their cans all sitting. And they take it and they throw it. Your grandparents, we have 90-year-old people that come in and do that. So, when you sit and you say, no one likes this thing, no one wants this, you know that I stand there and I help people that are 90 years old that cannot afford a dumpster. And I turn around and I help them. And they have one bag of garbage a month. And they say, I don't mind paying this $45 bill at all because I can afford to live. So, when I-
Hey, Chris, turn on your address, your post address.
When I'm at those meetings and I stand and tell you, I know. And I said the last time, I know because it's my job to know. I've spent hours out of branch bill. Do you know how many times we go to Derby because people come into our county and they dump garbage? There's so much more to this. And now, because of the fighting over this, we have to find another attorney. And everyone wants to sit and vouch. I came into this job as a part-time secretary. The director resigned. They said, do you want to do an interim? And then I had to fight to keep the job. I had to fight.
Chris, this, I know.
You're right. You know why I'm turning it off.
Well, just address us, please.
I'm the one that had to fight to keep a job. I had to fight to keep a department open. I had to fight every few months for people to have a job to come to. Do you know how many people go into Hamilton and ask, that are old, what do I do with newspaper? Because they want to keep their garbage bill down. You guys sit up here and make a judgment and you, that's fine, that's your job. But when you stand every day and you pull bags of garbage with diapers in them and you want people to say, I'm so glad that this is here because I don't know what I would do, then we'll have a conversation. There's a quote, if you don't have enough knowledge with someone, don't sit down and talk to them. But I sit and talk to you every day and I'm going to tell you every day what the people in our community, in Perry County, need. I'm sorry that this was not presented right. I am. I'm sorry that Mr. Cole presented it. I wasn't happy with it. He'll tell you, him and I had learns about it. Absolutely, we did. I don't want us to lose our equipment. I don't want anything to change. I want us to go bigger and better and have more things for this community because I think we're a good community. But I believe we take care of our own. I believe, yes, we need an alternate route to get off across that bridge because I don't want to roll a bullet through Rockwood. But there's more to do here than to sit and say, I don't want that $45 because I don't use it. Well, but your neighbor does. The person in north part of this county does. The other people in this community too. This is Perry County. This isn't Hamilton, this isn't Tell City, this is not, but this is Perry County. This is where I choose to live.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you for your passion, too. Cindy, I believe unless Lori will yield to you, she was next to go.
Oh, no, it's okay.
Okay.
Just to address, because I was called out by name. I have, no one will find on record anywhere where I have advocated for getting rid of the solid waste district. Greg Jarboe and I worked together when he was a commissioner to get it on the ballot as a question. And I think, Chris, you remember that. It was, we asked, Jeff never followed up with that, so I'm assuming it got dropped. I remember a meeting Randy Cole come before the solid waste board and asked the same question about getting it on the ballot for the $45 fee. Just for the people to be able to voice, anyone that voted got to voice their opinion on it. That was fair. It neither kept it going or did not stop it. But I have never advocated for getting rid of it totally. And as far as Chris's job and the way the solid waste is running now, I think this needs very clarified. It doesn't change nothing. It changes nothing other than the citizens getting that $45 fee back through taxes they pay. Her job remains. It goes on as well as everybody else that works at that solid waste. The services remain the same. Nothing changes. So, I don't know where that's coming from. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess the last one.
Lori, if you could, just state your name, please. I know we know who you are, but people watching may not.
Okay, I'm Lori Van Dure. I live at 1811 Street, apartment 3C.
Thank you.
Okay, well, first of all, I'd say thank you to everybody that came here because, you know, this is the coolest I've ever seen.
They're here for you.
That's a good training.
She didn't hear me. I'm messing with you, Lori. I'm just giving you a hard time. I said they're here for you.
I wouldn't expect anything like that. Okay, so, first I'd like to speak, well, I would like to speak to you first because you spoke about, I think, what are you talking about me when I spoke about the prescription? Well, let me, I spoke about his medication. Let me tell you about the medication I'm not on and why I suffer chronic pain. That medication, when he retired, the county was paying approximately $5,000 for a three-month supply. I can tell him the name of the medication and he could verify for you that what I'm telling you is the truth. So, I'm no longer on that medication. And I had to go on a cheaper medication, okay? And take cash when I walked in the door because I have no insurance because the insurance was so high. But I don't know how the inner workings of things are, you know, whether the county gets reimbursed or when they pay out people's medical claims or whatever from when my husband was working. But I do know they paid out over $200,000 in care just for this thing, okay? So, whether that number was even updated regularly, I don't know. But if you take time to go sit at the drugstore, just go in there and have a chair and sit and just listen to the number of people who cannot, and the people behind the counter know it because they will ask you, do you know that this medication costs this amount of money because it's so ungodly high? And do you know that the reason I go to McDonald's to eat is because I've had seven back surgeries and I am in chronic pain all the time? I cannot clean my house. Cooking is horrific to do the cooking, try to clean it up. And my apartment looks like crap. My little mother's sitting right there. He's welcome to come in and verify. It looks like crap. But let me tell you about the workers at McDonald's. They're there every day. And they see those older people every day. They know you by name. And many of those managers are so skilled at their jobs. They know the people who need to order in a certain way to save a little bit of money. And they will tell you, if you order it this way, it will save you the money. And I have been there enough times because I go there almost every day of the year, sometimes multiple times. I'm one of those people that does everything I can to keep our food bill down. But I've been there when many older people, when they had to buy one, get one, took a sandwich home because maybe that's all they were going to have later on. A sandwich for lunch, maybe, a sandwich for supper. I don't think you have any clue. And I respect whatever decisions any of you make, okay? I'm not going to hate nobody over nobody's decision they make. It's not about that. But you need to think outside the box. You just need to think outside the box. And my understanding, and please correct me, nothing's going to change. Aren't they still going to collect the trash and recycle? Is anything going to change with Mr. Cole's proposal? Nothing. Nothing. So, I don't know. And then I would like to point out that, did she leave the room that late to that speaker? She has freedom of speech. You shouldn't interrupt her when she's speaking, okay?
Because the point of order is Roberts' rules to keep on the subject. And that's the mayor's job to do that.
She was keeping on the subject. The subject, okay, isn't always about what you want to hear, okay?
That's right. That's why we have point of order and Roberts' rules of order.
The point is, what someone is speaking is not always going to be what you want to hear. But they have the right to speak it.
And the mayor has the authority to do that.
And I thought she did a great job, even though her view might be a little different from mine. But I don't do her job. And God bless all of you for doing the job that you do. Because I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it. So, regardless, you know, how you vote or how you, whatever, God bless all of you for what you do.
Thank you. I'm not being smart, Alec, but you don't own the apartment building you live in, do you?
No.
You just, okay. How, so, the $45 is not collected by you. It's property owners. Property owners pay the $45.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't, it wouldn't matter one way or the other, whether it was collected by me or it wasn't collected by me. I'm a citizen and I have the right to speak.
Oh, I don't count that, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to kind of reel this in a little bit so we can kind of, you know, be respectful. Everyone's timing, and I appreciate you. Phillip said he had 45 seconds, so you can have as long as you need. If you're the council, you can discuss it. So, do you need longer?
I'll go quick. We could try to meet in the middle. I don't know if either side would even like that. Phase it into where the county sets up the special tax. It takes two or three years. We'll let Randy figure out how to pay it. But we pay a chunk the first year and then decreasing amounts until that comes in. But that's just not my idea.
I appreciate you bringing out, bringing some suggestions, so. We'll do, is it okay, do you want to do one more and then that's it? Or what, this is your meeting?
Sherri wants to speak.
Sherri, if you'd like to come up. State your name, please. We know who you are, but people watching may not, so we appreciate it.
Sherri Flynn, 501 Tenth Street in Tell City. So, I just wanted to state, you know, as a taxpayer and talking to other people in the city, people would like to have a break. A couple of things to say, the edit money is collected through all of our taxes, whether you live in the county or the city or wherever. It's my understanding that there is excess edit funds, excess edit funds available this year, meaning that they have gone up significantly from last year. So, the question then becomes, what are we going to spend this money on? And I'm not sure what you all will decide to spend it on. That's your job to decide what to spend it on. But as a taxpayer, again, I'm saying, asking if you would just consider, just this one year, then talk about other plans. Everyone ought to come up with a, you know, talk about, throw out, come up with the best solution. I would never say that the $45 fee is not needed. I don't want to say that just because I'm advocating that we use edit funds to pay it for the taxpayers this year does not mean that I'm saying that the $45 amount is not needed. I agree with Mr. Cleman and the others who stated that it's really not fair that Walmart or, and I'm, gosh, I'm really sorry, I keep using Walmart.
All of us are picking on Walmart. We love Walmart. Just for the credit, if I want.
As a homeowner. I agree with that. And something can be done about that. But that's a whole separate issue than what we're looking at right now of paying this fee this year with that excess funds. And everybody has different ideas. And I just wish everyone would respect everyone's ideas and not make this political. I don't care who came up with this idea. I don't care if it was a Democrat, a Republican, an independent. I don't care. The idea, as I see it, is to get the taxpayers a little bit of relief this year and then go ahead and discuss it further for future years. And just for the record, I really totally against the property tax idea simply because somebody's house who's assessed at a lower value doesn't pay the same rate as someone's house who's assessed at a higher value. Just because your home is assessed at a higher value, and mine is not, it does not mean that you use recycling or trash more than someone who has a lower value home. So, I think when we do that, we're getting into socialism. So, but back on the issue, as a taxpayer, I would appreciate that we be paid this year that would put $45 into every city resident's pocket that we could spend at the local businesses in Tell City and Perry County.
Quick question for Sherri, if I may. Is it socialism to pay the solid waste fee for businesses? What's proposed?
I just said that I don't believe we should do that. I believe that we should, this year, be paying it for the residents. What you're telling me is that the businesses are not paying it?
Correct.
Okay, so, that's a separate issue. Right now, they're not paying it? Who's paying it?
No, 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 no. They are paying, they are paying, Sherri. Under the proposal, they will not be paying anything.
You, I thought you said they're each paying $45 each, like a resident. That Walmart pays $45, that I pay $45.
Currently, under the proposed, under the interlocal agreement that's been presented to us, businesses will pay nothing.
Okay, and again, Larry, I've not read the interlocal agreement. I'm not privy to that. I am not on the city council. What I'm asking as a taxpayer is one thing. This year, give the taxpayers a break using those additional edit funds that we did not expect to get and pay our $45 fee, not the businesses, the local residents. Let me finish, please. The local residents $45 fee used next year to come up with another solution. I am in no way saying the fee's not needed. I'm in no way saying we should pay for businesses. I'm asking that we pay for residents this year using those excess funds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, do you want any?
So, we're not.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the minutes, please. Just, I don't know who you've been, yeah.
Okay, 827 23rd Street. I'm not, do you know what year the solid waste was implemented?
Early 1990s.
My gosh.
All right, Cheryl. Early 1990s.
About 1992 or '04 who owned newspaper articles, I looked it up.
I, myself, have been paying that every year since its implementation. And I have never once used the service because I've always had access to my work or my ex-husband's work, dumpsters.
Do you recycle, curbs have recycling at all? You don't?
No. But just, so, some people don't use it, some people do. So, in order to keep it fair, use the edit funds and pay for everybody speaking.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question regarding the edit funds. Since Randy is here, he made a statement earlier. I just, Randy, I have this sheet that was prepared by the auditor in October that was presented to the county council that shows the estimated ending balance for 2023 of the economic development income tax is $2,115,826. Is that correct?
Which one are you pointing to?
The one on the circle, the edit.
LIT?
No, the ed.
Economic Development Income Tax?
Yes.
And the estimated end balance is $2,115,000?
Strictly correct.
Absolutely incorrect. Absolutely incorrect. We take, we're going to collect, right now, we allocate all of our edit money for different programs. Half of it goes, basically, because I don't have the exact figures here, half of it goes to the county highway department, whatever we collect, okay? Then we also have a nickel of that tax, which you guys got an increase because we put it in place, for basic building maintenance, property maintenance, because the county has $30,000 in a reserve rainy day fund, which won't last nothing. We also, if you want me to quit, that's fine. That number is incorrect.
It is incorrect.
Absolutely incorrect. And as this LIT one here, that has the 2.5 million, that's restricted because it was collected from the public to pay for the jail and the people who put the tax in place over collected.
Do you know what the balance is as of the end of '23?
The lit?
No, the edit tax.
The edit tax? I don't have that with me, but it's not, it's not too really.
Randy, can I just ask a real quick question? This is no way of fact. Would the county consider covering the entire $45 for all county residents, including Tell City, Canton, Troy, using edit funds, using their edit dollars? Would they consider paying for people who actually live in uncorporated areas as well as the incorporated, such as Troy, Canton, Texas? Would they consider that?
I'm sure they would. Chris, we come in here with edit funds. You understand how they're split, don't you?
Oh, yeah.
I brought them with me.
No, I got, I got the sheet. I've got the sheet right in front of me. I was just, I was just seeing, would they consider?
But we can, we can talk about that because this money is a local income tax, but it's divided. The county gets 1.5 million with some others. The city of Tell City gets $888,000. The city of Hamilton gets $198,898,000. And the town of Troy gets $10,000 plus a little bit. So, the local income tax and all of these taxes are collected and split among the whole group. Now, what we received from '23 to '24 was $201,000 in additional money that was collected from these folks, okay? I would have never dreamed this would be controversial to simply take that excess money and give them a break on that day in the solid waste fee. Larry brings up the point about businesses. Now, if there's 200 major businesses that's owned outside of our community, $9,000. For $9,000, we're going to take away all of these other folks $45. The small businesses in our community, any one of you, the owner owns it, the owner operates it, the owner pays taxes, local income tax. So, it's not a big number. And we ought to be thankful we have Walmart here that's employing substantial amount of people. Those people are contributing to our economy through not only paying the taxes, but spending the money back into our community. So, I don't think any large employer, small employer, anyone that employs anybody should become a devil within our community. I just can't ever agree with that. We want more here, and that's how we grow.
Well, I appreciate your comments, Randy. Thank you. So, council, we've had, I feel, I think it was a very healthy discussion. I don't think anything got too out of hand, which I was kind of concerned about that initially. No, I was, I'm not going to lie. There's a lot of passion here, and that's a good thing. But I appreciate everyone being here. I appreciate everyone's comments. We may not always agree or disagree, but I appreciate it. Council, you've heard everybody's comments. You've made your own comments. You have your own thoughts. You have your own opinions. We're at a vote point where we probably need to take a vote, I would say. So.
What are we voting on?
Whatever you got. Whatever you want to make it, whatever you want to make your motion.
Are we voting?
Somebody has to make a motion.
Are we voting on the interlocal agreement? That's what's before.
That is, that is what we would be, yes.
I want to make a motion. We vote on it.
Okay, is that a motion in favor?
In favor of doing away with the $45 or going into the agreement with the county.
Okay. So, that a motion made by Brian to do away with the $45 and sign, putting words in my mouth, I'm sorry, but sign the interlocal agreement with the county. So, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Got a second by Phillip. Any further discussion?
I will just make this one point. We've been advised by our attorney that it's an improper use of edit funds. So, I will vote no on when we get to the vote.
Okay. Any other comments?
Let me rephrase that. Not by our attorney, by outside council.
I was going to correct that for you when you got to a vote.
Okay.
I won't throw you under the bus, Jim.
I've got tire marks all over me.
All right. So, we've had a motion been made and seconded. And we're still in discussion. If there's no other, all those in favor signify by saying, and this is to sign the interlocal agreement just so everybody understands what we're voting on, I'm going to be confused. Is there, all in favor signify by saying aye. Is there, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Motion doesn't pass. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, board appointments for council members. Counsel, you have two board members to consider. Jeff, can you drive this? I gotta plug in.
I can.
I just gotta, because you've gotta comment on the-
Plan Commission.
And I need to plug in the camera.
I do. Okay. So there are a couple of council board appointments that are up. There is currently a, I'm not gonna call it a vacancy, but technically expired December 31st, '23, Charlie Ballmeister was a representative to the Perry County Animal Board. And so if the council has any thoughts, I see Mr. Ballmeister is here, I am assuming from his presence that he would accept reappointment if the council is inclined to do that.
There is a letter attached to this, Jeff, him-
Thank you.
Requesting reappointment. And he was only appointed, I think, he only served on the board a couple of months, I mean.
Couple of months to fill out.
Yeah, okay. So-
I'd like to nominate him. Sorry, I cut you off.
No, no, it's fine, that's fine. So you're making a motion, Phillip?
So we've got a motion by Phillip, and a second by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Then Plan Commission, Larry and Julie both served on the Plan Commission, expired December 31st, '23. We've not had any Plan Commission meetings, so we've not had any quorum issues. Julie is here, I do not know if she-
Mayor, is that, does that have to be two council members?
That's what I was about to ask, I don't remember the answer to that.
I believe, well, I can tell you, as long as I can, I was on council back in 2011 with Julie, and we both served on it, so up until that point, yes. Before then, I don't know.
Yeah, and I cannot, you've put me on the spot, will run over me with the bus on this issue, I cannot tell you for certain.
I would say it's probably important to have a council member on there, because things that are voted on that will actually come to the council for consideration, it's nice to have them educated already when they go to vote on, but-
I will agree 100% having Julie and prior, Larry was on it, and I remember there was who, I cannot remember who the council member was before Larry that was on it.
Me?
It may have been, it may have been you before you were mayor.
I just said that it was me.
And it's absolutely a resource, so that they can vouch for what was done at the Plan Commission at the council meeting.
I, I have expressed my interest in serving again on the, on the Planning Commission.
And I very much enjoyed having Julie on there, but if you guys want to have another council member, I bet Julie's feelings would not be hurt.
She's not jumping up and down. Okay, so, is there a motion to, who wanted to be on there?
Well, we've got it.
Well, it was Larry and Julie, so we have one council, is there a council member that would like to basically be replacing Julie as a council member on the Plan Commission? Is there any nominations, is what he's asking, all right?
Brian, are you interested?
Yep.
I'll make a motion, we nominate Brian Stein.
Well, you accept it, so. Got a motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Larry, any further discussion?
All two candidates' members shall be Larry Kleeman and Brian Stein.
But you didn't vote on, you didn't vote on Larry.
You wanted your motion to be both, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you're all right with that, Larry?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay, sorry.
Is it proper for me to second?
Does any, wait a minute, does anybody else want to be on there? I don't.
I got a busy year.
Okay, so motion made, second, further discussion, we're done with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, good deal. That's done, thank you. All right. Now, mayoral appointments, moving on to item C, mayoral appointments boards.
Yours.
That one's, oh, thank you. All right. Number one, the Alcohol Beverage Commission, I'm reappointing Linda Matternley. She was the only one who actually even applied. Number two, the Board of Zoning Appeals, reappointing Paul Ramsey and Bob Young. The Flood Ball Committee, I'm reappointing Brett Badger, Jim Holmes, Andy Hicks, and Chris Toothman. Congratulations, Jim, you didn't even, you didn't apply. The Local Emergency Plan Committee, which was recently, Julie Koner, will be Brian Stein. Parks and Rec Board, reappointment, Zach Hartz. Yours truly, Mr. Philip Simpson over here. Newly appointed, Mr. John Gebhardt, and he's replacing Brian Grayly on the board. Perry County Convention and Visitors Bureau, I'm gonna be reappointing, well, I did reappoint, sorry, Danny Boland, Linda Matternley. Newly appointed, Megan Fitchley, and she replaced Joan Hess. Personal Advisor Committee, as always, the council president, so that's Gerald Gately, and I've got this typed up for you, Connie, so you-
Good.
It's done well, you don't have to write anything down.
It's been a long evening of taking those.
You will, once this is all completed, we'll update everything, and you'll be in good shape.
You're losing me.
So let me start back over. Number seven, Personal Advisor Committee, Gerald Gately serves under as council president, replacing Gary Morton, and reappointing Connie Berger, and as clerk treasurer, and myself. Those are the three that serve on that. The Plan Commission, I'm reappointing Mark Laughlin and Joe Wasnicki. Plan Commission, or excuse me, the Regional, Region 15 Plan Commission, I'm reappointing Janice Hackbart. She was just here, but I believe she's since left. Tell City Housing Board, now this is a great one, I have been trying and trying and trying for like a year, and I'm happy to announce we finally have someone, Patrick Sage. So also known as Pat Sage, will be appointed at. And the Tell City Regional Arts, I'm gonna be reappointing myself, as well as Mr. Philip Simpson. We got it going on. All right, so that's, oh, okay, you can give her this one, too. She's got that. So that is all of the mayoral board appointments, so we, it looks like we have all of our appointments filled for the year, which is great. Thank you to everyone that applied to serve on any of these committees, it's really nice to see getting applications in for letters of interest, so. Next up is item D, dissolving of committees. This is a bit long, but the ordinances, basically amending, repealing, whatever you wanna call it, several of those.
They're easy.
Well, they're easy, because you know what, we don't have to read them entirely anymore, so, there you go. So we just need ordinance numbers. An ordinance dissolving the Technology Committee, what ordinance number would that be, Connie?
1213. No, it, ordinances don't have the 2024.
Resolutions have that.
You know, I was wondering about that, wouldn't it be easier-
I know, that's why Jeff typed it up, and then I changed it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Wouldn't it be easier on us, though, to have the year in case we were looking for, I'm just asking.
I have just followed the way it was four years ago when I took over, and just every year you-
The digest for the-
What's the number?
For the ordinances, once they're adopted-
1213.
Will reflect the year of adoption.
Okay, okay.
So we're starting with the Technology Committee, which is ordinance number 12-13. Is there a motion for the-
You're starting with technology?
Well, yeah, if I'm not supposed to?
No, I just- In order for us, but-
It's not in the same order as your numbers are gonna be.
Well, okay, well, I've started with technology, so we're starting with-
Okay.
I didn't realize.
So that's 1213.
That's 1213, yes.
Is there a motion to allow for the first reading by title, I guess?
So moved.
Motion made by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gerald, any further discussion? Any number called for a verse, a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, first reading, an ordinance dissolving the Technology Committee. Is there a motion to suspend for the second and third reading by title only?
Motion.
Motion made by Gerald, there's a second. Second by Phillip, any further discussion? Any none will call for vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Second reading, an ordinance dissolving the Technology Committee, third reading, an ordinance dissolving the Technology Committee. You have first, second, third reading of ordinance number 12-13. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Phillip, is there a second?
Second.
Well, who, Mike, Larry, who do you want to get?
Larry.
Larry, okay, second by Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, let's do the, what is that, let's do the cemetery. All right.
Cemetery is 1211.
Okay, ordinance is 12-11. Okay, is there a motion for a first reading of ordinance number 1211?
Motion.
Motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Larry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. An ordinance dissolving the Greenwood Cemetery Committee, is there a motion to suspend the rules for second and third reading by title only?
Motion.
Motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, all those in favor signify-
Wait a minute, discuss, well, go ahead.
Discussion, sorry. You want, you don't want discussion?
I would say that the cemetery section's here, and he's okay with that, and the members, majority of the members, have no problem with dissolving this committee. Is that correct, Alby?
I'm okay with it.
He seems enthusiastic about it, that's great. Okay, so, second and third reading, we're voting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, we've got the first, second, third reading of ordinance number 12-11, an ordinance dissolving the committee, Greenwood Cemetery Committee. Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Motion made by Gerald, second, anyone?
Second.
Larry, well, you're racking these up over there. All right, you gotta be quick.
We get paid by motion.
You do get paid, yeah. All right, so we've had motion made by Gerald, second by Larry, no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Now, this next one, this is the ARP-
Is this the Larry Kleeman ordinance he's wanting this for?
No, I don't know. So this is 2020, what is this one, Connie?
1212.
12, all right. Counsel, is there a motion for the first reading of ordinance number 12-12?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Larry, is there a second? Second by Mike, any further discussion? Any none will call for vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ordinance number 12-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 1158. This is also-
1185.
1185, getting dyslexic at this point, geez. All right, this is basically an ordinance removing, dissolving the ARP committee. Is there a motion for second and third reading by title only?
Move.
Motion made by Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, any further discussion? Any none will call for vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. All right, now we're gonna do the second, third reading by title only, is that right? We just do that? I'm losing my mind here.
No, you just voted on it.
Yeah.
So you need to read it.
Now it's the motion to, now it's the motion to adopt.
Okay, is there a motion?
Well, he didn't read the second.
Second reading is 12, or ordinance number 12-12, an ordinance amending ordinance 1185, third reading, ordinance 12-12, an ordinance amending ordinance 1185.
No.
No.
Now, the motion's-
This is confusing, I'm sorry, there's a lot of motions, and it's up to you.
You always have room to breathe when I have to read these things.
I have never had it, so we've had first, second, and third reading of this, is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Motion made by Larry, second by Brian, any further discussion? Any none will call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank God. All right.
Got one more.
We got one more, I lost it, uh-oh. Traffic, carry.
New business.
Now, moving on to new business. Stop sign, Humboldt and 11th Street. Is there, I can-
There was a favorable recommendation at the Board of Works tonight for this.
To install a stop sign at Humboldt and 11th Street. Larry had some residents approach him about the intersection. Assistant Chief Kleeman did a traffic study and deemed it necessary for the stop sign to be installed. Now it comes to the council under ordinance for consideration. This is ordinance number 1214. Is there a motion for first reading?
Motion.
Motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Larry, any further discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Now, first reading, amendment to the traffic code, excuse me, amendment to the traffic section of the Code of Tell City. And this is referencing Section 1, 14-1112 of the Code of Tell City shall amend the read as follows. I just want to read this so everybody's aware what we're voting on, it's a little different. Stop sign shall be placed at 11th Street for traffic on the north side and the south side of 11th Street, and intersection of 11th Street and Humboldt Street in the city of Tell City, resulting in a four-way stop at the intersection of 11th Street and Humboldt Street in the city of Tell City. So counsel, you've got the first reading of ordinance number 1214, is there a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only?
So moved.
Motion made by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, any further discussion? Any none will call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. First, or second reading, ordinance number 1214, amendment to traffic section of the Code of Tell City. Third reading, ordinance number 1214, amendment to the traffic section of the Code of Tell City. Counsel, you've got the first, second, and third reading of ordinance number 1214, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Larry, any final further discussion?
How long, how long is there a central, like, stop sign put out there so people see it?
As long as you want.
As long as I want.
You just tell us when you want to come up, how about that? We give you the authority.
Until somebody hits them.
Or somebody steals it.
Or somebody steals.
They steal our signs, but, yeah, I was doing, they do steal our signs, they steal our signs, chief's coming after you.
That's a theft.
It is theft.
That is a bus route, too, Phillip, bus, bus lets kids all down that street.
Okay.
When it travels down that street, I know.
When I talked to Phil about this, he said you'd be shocked at how many accidents there have been at that intersection.
Really? Okay.
That is a good intersection to have a four-way.
It probably is, all right, so we've had first, second, third reading, we're finishing up, the final discussion, is there a motion to approve?
I had Gerald.
Gerald made a, okay, we're at-
No, I had Gerald make a motion, and Larry seconded.
Okay, so we're at the all discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Phillip, you got me off task. Phillip, you got me off task. I'm kidding, I'm just giving you a hard time.
That's my job.
It is. All right, now, under new business, item B, ARP funds. We just dissolved the ARP committee under old business under item D. So that puts that whole funding at the responsibility now of the council and what to do with it.
Correct.
We had a request, I'm gonna let Larry kind of talk about it, because I know he had spoke to the council. And you should have a letter, right, Phillip? Where's that? You got the letter there?
There is a letter in here.
So kind of talks about.
Jesse was here, and he lived.
Jesse was here.
We, I think Jesse got tired. He just sits there a long time. And I understand, and I appreciate you all for being patient.
I, I did meet with Jesse. Actually, the mayor, I think, referred him to me, and I met with him, and we discussed this. And they have started a fundraising project to purchase a larger passenger van that would be used for some of their activities in Perry County, all of Perry County. And their transportation program is one of the most active transportation programs as far as people participating. I had, now, this bus is mainly for activities, for, like, they take groups to restaurants every now and, and on outings, what I call outings. And I had a personal experience with, with using them when my, my sister was going through her rehab from stroke and required a transportation van that had a lift for a wheelchair when she was in a wheelchair. So they provide an excellent service. They do a great job with their transportation program, and their activities have increased substantially, actually, since they've moved their operations to Tel City and the William Tel Center. So they have started a fundraising program. I know they're going to be approaching others for contributions. They estimate this van will cost around fifty thousand dollars. I think, if I looked on their Facebook post the other day, and they had raised, I think, fourteen thousand. They've just been, they've just had that solicitation out for a couple of weeks, but they had raised fourteen thousand through that, from miscellaneous donors. And I know they're approaching other businesses. I think they're going to apply for funds from the county. My understanding, the county has around a million dollars left of ARP funds. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but, so Jesse, he's not asking us to fund the full van, but he is asking us to allocate ten thousand dollars of our ARP funds. I think it's a worthy request, and that we should approve that. But again, that's my opinion.
Well, council, this is some of your first ARP business, so I understand if you have questions about how it's done. If you do, I'll try to answer the best I can.
Connie, how much in ARP funds do we have left?
Right now, you have seven hundred and seventeen dollars and seven, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, seven seventy-one.
A hundred and seventeen thousand?
No.
No.
Seven hundred and seventeen thousand.
Well, okay, but.
That is before you will be asked to approve additional appropriations of funding